Good evening, everybody. At 6 o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with an invocation led by Councilmember McKenzie, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Helsley. Please rise as you're able.
Today we ask for wisdom as we come together to govern over our city. We pray for those who are homeless, those who are hungry, and those who feel hopeless. Blessed those who have sworn to protect and serve us, please keep them safe. We pray for peace in our city and peace across our world. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Johnson, would you please call roll?
Councilwoman Fugit.
Here.
Councilwoman Helsley.
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Here.
Councilwoman Parker.
Here.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Here.
Councilwoman Roberto.
Here.
Councilwoman Singh.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
And Councilwoman Thomas. Eight members present, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item four is minutes from our last meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to tonight's agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn? Okay, are there any items to be postponed? Are there any items to be added by motion? Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussions? Seeing—
Actually—
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Parker.
Actually, I wanted to add items to the consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
I've got some to do.
Ms. Parker, and then I'll go to Ms. Helsley, please. What would you like to be added?
Eleven T to eleven A G.
Eleven T what?
A G.
Eleven T as in Thomas?
You can't do all those. And just to give a—
To eleven A G. Okay, basically, all of the cat ones.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And to give a brief explanation to my colleagues, this is somewhat building off of the rule that we have but aren't currently following necessarily. And that is when we have these grant agreements that are coming before us, and there is no opposition, no controversial matters to be discussed, it is an item that we can add to our consent agenda. And that's the reason for my motion or my recommendation.
One, just point of information, there is one person signed up to speak in favor of item eleven V.
Right.
Oh, would that be after? Does that not—I think—
It's included that.
Yeah, so that's just point of information. Eleven V has one person signed up to speak in favor of it.
We could remove that item from my list, then. So all of eleven T to eleven A G minus eleven V.
Okay, motion made to consolidate those items, as Councilmember Parker just stated. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, you're voting on the motion to consolidate those items. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to consolidate carries. Just, Mr. Johnson, remind me to not forget V.
That's right.
Okay. Oh, not to consolidate. It's motion to put it on consent. I'm sorry. Let me rephrase that or take back what I said. The motion to put it on consent passes. Thank you. Now, let's go back to the original consent agenda as amended, where we've added those items. Is there any further questions or discussion on the consent agenda as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the consent items are approved. Okay. Time now for my mayor's report. We have a lot of good things to celebrate. I want to start by celebrating our Summer in the City interns. For the last eight weeks, we've been hosting nineteen young men and women in departments all across the city, and this year's group is leaving behind a special legacy. Tomorrow at noon, our Summer in the City interns will be dedicating a little free library that they have built, and it will be right here in the City-County Building. And the students designed this project specifically with young kids in mind. The dedication will be on the main level, right here in the City-County Building, near the elevators at noon tomorrow, and everyone's invited to attend. Then on Thursday, the same group of summer interns will graduate from this internship with a special luncheon and presentation at the Public Works Center at noon. And councilmembers, I invite you to come celebrate these future leaders, learn more about their time here at the city. It's a really fun day, and the students will be sharing their presentations with us as well as with their friends and family. It's always a really nice time. I know you guys have a lot on your plates, but if you can carve out time to come to that, you won't be disappointed. Also tomorrow is the—I invite everybody to the Knoxville Peace Meet and Greet event. Knoxville Peace is the National Institute of Criminal Justice Reform Initiative to Reduce Community-Based Violence Through Violence Intervention. With most of the staff now in place and already working, NICJR wanted to invite community members to meet these local folks, many of them you probably already know. The event will be at Logan Temple AME Zion Church from 5:30 to 7:30, and that's tomorrow. And councilmembers, thank you again for supporting this initiative, and I hope you're able to join us. Tomorrow's also another fun thing for kids. School is still out for another little bit, and we have our final kiderrific of the season. It's a free, family-friendly event. It's at World's Fair Park tomorrow, ten to one. Really appreciate all the city staff who helped make these Wednesdays so special for families across the city. And another fun thing happening this week, something that I'm especially excited about, this Thursday, we'll be officially celebrating the completion of the Cal Johnson mural at the Cal Johnson Community Center. It's inside the gymnasium and is really quite impressive. The celebration is 10 o'clock on Thursday. And last but not least of my announcements in my report to you is that I want to take a moment to ask all Knoxvilleians to recognize the 35th anniversary of the American with Disabilities Act is this Saturday, July 26. This special anniversary is an opportunity for all of us to reflect on our goals to be an accessible city for all and to foster an inclusive culture in our neighborhoods, schools, and workplaces. So I have issued a proclamation, which I won't read to you right now, but it's this Saturday, and I want to thank everyone on the city staff and across our community who works diligently every day to keep these values on the forefront. These efforts really do strengthen our entire community. And finally, a reminder about our rules of decorum. We are here to do the city's official business. Those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum need to sign up with the city recorder before 4:00 p.m. Do not use profanity, and when speaking to specific agenda items, you must stay on topic. Remarks must be germane to the question ahead of the assembly. That is, statements must have bearing on whether the pending motion should be adopted. Those who fail to adhere to these rules will be ruled out of order. For those who are listening, please note that if you disrupt a public meeting, you will be asked to leave or escorted out. Thanks in advance for everyone's respect for these rules. And that concludes my mayor's report. There are some reports of councilmembers. I believe, Mr. Thomas, you had your light on first, please.
Yes, happy to announce that the weekend of August 1st, 2nd, and 3rd is Lonsdale's annual homecoming. This will be a special one. It will be the 40th anniversary. Festivities, fun, music, food start at Friday at 4:00. It will go into 11:00. On Saturday at 10:00, there's a parade, a live band later that night. And then on Sunday, there's a dinner at the Friendship Baptist Church. So come on out for that. It's always a lot of fun. And for more information, you can go to the Lonsdale Homecoming page on Facebook, and I hope to see you there. And that concludes my councilman's report.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everybody that we have city council elections that are approaching, and I want to remind everybody of some important dates for the primary election. The final day to register to vote is actually coming up on Monday, July 28. And remarkably, the first day of early voting is fast approaching as well. That's Wednesday, August 6. Early voting will end on Thursday, August 21, and the election day for the primary is Tuesday, August 26. If you have—if you want additional information, you can reach out to the Election Commission or you can visit knoxcounty.org/election. So just want to remind everybody about that. Also, I wanted to just take a moment to recognize the passing of Doug Veem, who was a member of our community for a long time, and I know—I think everyone up here knew Doug. He was a Navy veteran. He was somebody who pretty much every community meeting you would go to, you would see him there. He served in a variety of roles in our community as an advocate and a leader. He hosted a TV show, which I think many of us actually appeared on for a while, where he interviewed local leaders and candidates for many years, and he organized it even when he wasn't in front of the screen sometimes. Always enjoyed his perspective and wisdom, and I just wanted to say that I'll miss my friend, and I know he'll be missed in our community.
Thank you, councilmember. Next is Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to invite the public—and Mayor, thank you for sharing those announcements. Really great things going on in the six districts. I'll continue with that. On Wednesday, July 30, CAC is going to be hosting a retirement party for Mr. Albert Nelson, who was actually the manager over the CAC East and North office for fifty-two years of service. And that will be held at the LT Ross Building on Wednesday, July 30, from 4:00 to 6:00. Also, on Thursday, July 31, at 9:00 a.m., I wish we could do a drum roll on this one because we've been waiting a very long time. Two different things that will be happening at the same time, which will be the groundbreaking for the new Burlington Fire Station, as well as the Burlington Streetscape Project that we've heard a lot about for a very long time. And then I also want to mention that Saturday, August 2, the Knoxville Area Urban League will be hosting their annual Shoes for Schools program, which will now be held at the Covenant Stadium. It is a free event, and there will be free school supplies, but children must have registered in advance—I think like a couple of weeks ago—to receive the free tennis shoes. But there will be free school supplies for all children. There will be food and fun, and so just invite everyone to please come out and to share this information with families that could benefit from the free school supplies. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fugit.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just an update from my city council colleagues. The Rules of Procedure Task Force and Charter Review Task Force met. We have concluded our work on all the rules we could get through by now, and so we'll be discussing that later. That will come before council in the form of an ordinance recommendation from the committee. But beginning August 19, we will begin our discussions on how to establish a charter review process. But I want to make clear to the public and clear to council and clear to all city staff and everybody who's wondering what that is. It is not opening up the charter. We were tasked with creating a process to begin a more regular schedule of charter review. Think of it as looking at an organization's bylaws. Periodically, you need to look at them and see if there are things that need to be changed. So this is just—we talked about it at city council retreat for years. We're finally going to begin looking at how we put something like that in place. So if you have thoughts, ideas, please share some of those with Mr. Johnson, and we will begin that discussion at our August 19 meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Two brief comments. Next Thursday, July 31, in this room at 5:00 p.m., council will host a workshop to review ordinance regulations and codes enforcement, particularly short-term rentals, scooters, and other items. So again, 5:00 p.m. in this room on July 31, council will host a workshop. And the second one is more fun. Happy early birthday to Councilwoman Fugit. We celebrate you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you very much, and seeing no further lights on, we'll move on to the agenda. Mr. Johnson.
8B is resolution confirming the reappointment of Travis Tillman to the Historic Zoning Commission.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9C is an ordinance to amend the ordinance number O-107-2019, known and cited as the City of Knoxville zoning code, to remove a previously approved planned designation from property located at 2727 Tacoma Drive, Brian Pitcher, applicant, 4th District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9D is an ordinance approving the request of Reginald Bell for an amendment to the East City Sector Plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential for property located at 3309 Boyd's Bridge Pike, leaving any special purpose land use classifications unchanged, 6th District.
Mayor, I'm going to move to approve, but I'd also like to make a motion to combine items D, E, and F. They are all on the same items.
Okay. Why don't—you know, so the motion is to consolidate items D, E, and F has been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion to consolidate, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to consolidate carries. And Councilmember McKenzie, would you like to make a motion on the consolidated—
I absolutely would. Thank you. Motion to approve the consolidated items.
Okay. Motion's been made to approve and seconded. Any further questions or discussions? Seeing none—Councilmember McKenzie, did you want to speak to these items? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
10G is resolution approving an appeal by Joyce Feld on behalf of Scenic Knoxville of the Board of Zoning Appeals' approval of two variances. To one, increase the minimum required frontage on the street where the property is addressed from 250 feet to 192.5 feet for a changeable price sign per Article 13.6.G.1 and 2 to increase the maximum height for a detached sign in an IG zoning district from 10 feet to 20 feet per Article 13.9.F.3, Table 13-2, for property located at 1415 Third Creek Road, IG zoning district, 2nd District.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Councilmembers, just as a reminder, for these types of appeals, the appellant will have up to three speakers, and each of those speakers can have up to five minutes each. Appellie, same thing, and then the appellant can have up to a two-minute rebuttal. The only person I know who signed up to speak as the appellant is Kevin Murphy. So, Mr. Murphy, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kevin Murphy, 48508 Murphy Road, Knoxville. Joyce Feld, her president, had also signed up. She called me late this afternoon. She's come down with an illness, and I've consolidated her remarks. I'd ask for maybe six minutes. I think I can fit everything in.
Just try to do it in five, please.
All right. Very well, thank you.
You'll have a rebuttal opportunity if you can't do it in five.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. All right. First, the EMC variance. In 2009—so there's two variances, an EMC and a sign height. In 2009, our city council chose to ban new digital electronic message centers, or EMCs, because they were considered unsightly and contributed to unwanted visual pollution. At the time, there was a lot of discussion and a lot of public support for this change. Included in that discussion was what to do about a specific kind of EMC called a changeable price sign. This is the kind of digital sign we see at gas stations that the applicant is requesting today. Council was reluctant to ban these altogether, but they also wanted to prevent a proliferation of intrusive digital signs. The compromise from totally banning them was to limit changeable price signs to parcels with a minimum of 250 feet of frontage on the street where property is addressed. Again, that's on the street where property is addressed. Seeing Knoxville thinks this was much discussed, well-thought-out compromise, and has worked out well. When city council rewrote the signed ordinance in 2015, changes to the policy were considered and rejected. We recognize the property was previously addressed on Middlebrook Pike. There's an old house on the property that faces North Middlebrook. The address was changed to 1415 Third Creek Road in accordance with the addressing ordinance because the applicant submitted a site plan where the primary structure fronts Third Creek Road. In a sense, and while it was probably unintentional, the applicant created their own hardship by choosing not to have the building face Middlebrook Pike. They probably have good reasons for that decision, but it does come with consequences, and the city shouldn't have to compromise its carefully chosen standards to compensate for self-imposed hardships. Secondly, on the sign height, this is for the proposed pole sign on the corner of North Middlebrook Pike and Third Creek Road. They claim that there's a significant curve in Middlebrook Pike that impedes visibility. I've given you all a handout with that sign diagram, a picture, and a site layout. I drove this today again and took some pictures. When you look at the picture in your packet, that picture I took was—I was over 380 feet away from that intersection of Third Creek Road. I was on North Middlebrook Pike before we get to Weigles and approaching Third Creek Road. From that point, and my car is very low to the ground, I could see clearly where the proposed sign is located. You can sure see it if you're in something higher, like a semi truck or a work truck. If you want to claim that Middlebrook Pike blocks that visibility, well, I drove that today. I don't see it. You can see where that sign's going to be. Once you see that sign, a driver will have three opportunities to turn left and visit this establishment, and that's a diagram I put in your packet. The first opportunity is at that stoplight at Third Creek. They can turn left. The second one, they're going to put in another entrance past that stoplight on North Middlebrook Pike, and they'll be able to turn in there. And finally, the third one is a new driveway intended to serve their truck traffic. That driveway is 600 feet past the intersection. So if you're in a truck, you'll have 1,000 feet from when you could—at least more than at least 1,000 feet—from when you can see that sign until when you're going to have to turn into this establishment. It's plenty of visibility. So—and on South Middlebrook Pike, they have a ground sign, which will inform them, and you hit that ground sign before you hit their entrances. Topography, which is grading, also doesn't present a hardship. The site plan that they've given us shows that the sign, as proposed on North Middlebrook Pike, the current grade level—elevation there is about 947.5 feet at current site grade. The Middlebrook Pike contour lines are 947 feet, so that sign is just—it's just at road level right now. Grading, if they choose to change the topography of the site, that's under the control of the applicant, and if they change it to their detriment, that's their hardship. But the Weigles is kind of built up on North Middlebrook Pike. My supposition is that they're probably going to build theirs up, so their sign's going to go up more anyways. There's not a special condition on this lot. It's not irregular, except that it has two—you know, Middlebrook Pike is two one-way streets there. But they—the sign ordinance grants them relief. They get a second ground sign, which they're going to place on South Middlebrook Pike. So they get visibility on North Middlebrook, South Middlebrook, and Third Creek. So they haven't met the requirements to grant a variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Next, we'll hear from the appellees. Signed up to represent them is Taylor Forrester. Mr. Forrester, there you are. You have up to five minutes to address council. If you could start by stating your name and address for the record.
Yes. Taylor Forrester, 1111 North North Shore Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37919. Here on behalf of the original applicant, Race Track, for the development of a travel fueling center. The two basis and justifications for the granting of the variance and the hardship or difficulties are the irregular sitting of the lot. This was likely the result through an eminent domain type of process when Middlebrook Pike used to consist of just two lanes, and then the expansion into four lane resulted in a carve-out from the parent property to create this lot that's effectively a lot within the median between four lanes of traffic, South Middlebrook and North Middlebrook. This was not something that was requested by the original property owner. It was something that was placed on the original property owner. The other hardship or difficulty is the topography. Along South Middlebrook Pike is a higher grade than compared to North Middlebrook Pike. Across the site, there's about a 30-foot of grade change across the entirety of the site. From the corner of South Middlebrook Pike and Third Creek to North Middlebrook Pike and Third Creek is about a 10-feet of grade change, being higher at South Middlebrook and lower at North Middlebrook. The reduction of the minimum lot frontage from 250 feet to 192.5 feet for the frontage of where the property—the street address is given. Again, we initially didn't think we needed this variance because the property, as of February of this year, was addressed as 4810 North Middlebrook Pike. The frontage of our property along North Middlebrook Pike is approximately 575 feet. That's more than double the minimum requirement for the changing price sign. It was only discovered later when we submitted application for permitting and plans review that our address was changed. There was discussion with the addressing department because originally at the first BZA meeting, there was discussion of whether we could change the orientation of our building. They said the addressing department had said that that was the basis of setting a Third Creek address because that's where they thought our frontage would be. Followed up with the addressing department said, "If we do change the orientation, will you give us our North Middlebrook Pike address back?" And they said, "No, that's only one of the factors. That will not give you your North Middlebrook Pike address back." Basically, the justification of a Third Creek in the addressing department's mind was for 911 calls, emergency vehicle personnel. There's significantly less Third Creek addresses than there are North Middlebrook Pike addresses. Again, this was not something we requested. This was something that was placed upon us through no request of our own. Again, we have three frontages here. Two of these frontages have more than double—or at least double—the necessary frontage for the changing price sign. It just happens that the one that was—the address that we were changed to has a little bit less than the than the minimum of 250 feet. The height increase of the pole sign from 10 feet to 20 feet, this signage is located at the corner of Third Creek and North Middlebrook Pike. This signage is to be visible from all South Middlebrook, North Middlebrook, and Third Creek. So four different directions of traffic. Considering the height level and the grade change, it's necessary that this sign be visible from South Middlebrook Pike. This is a safety concern, visibility concern, where travelers can make timely and conscientious decisions to change lanes of travel to—if they were trying to visit the site, and it's not something that they're trying to change in an unsafe manner. Again, this all is industrial zone property. This is not something that's going to be a hardship or impact or injurious to the neighborhood. There's a lot of heavy tractor-trailer traffic on this road in a very busy section of Middlebrook Pike. Thank you, and can I answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Forrester. Now, the appellant has an opportunity for a two-minute rebuttal. Mr. Murphy, you're welcome to come back up, and you'll have up to two minutes to add any further comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just in a short rebuttal, I think we've addressed that, yes, the lot has three sides. It's a little irregular for that, but really important is that they are—the—they have two signs, two that they're allowed. One, they've chosen to put on that corner of North Middlebrook and Third Creek, which sounds like they also want that to be visible from South Middlebrook, even though they're also going to get a sign on South Middlebrook. Again, our sign ordinance grants relief if you have, you know, more than one street frontage. Then you can have up to two—you get a second additional ground sign in this case. So the sign ordinance already takes care of that one irregularity. In the other case, in topography, yep, there's—you go from one corner to the opposite corner, there is some 30 feet. The entire parcel is in KGIS is, I think, over 11 acres in size, though, so it's a pretty sizable piece. What they're looking at is maybe about half of that, but still, it's a lot of acreage for some topography. Developers, I've heard recently, have been using a term they like to call East Tennessee Flat, is to describe topography on sites, and this one, well, it's got a little chain elevation— elevation change. It's, it's not much, and certainly is not something severe. And they, they have failed, I think, to show how this, especially at North Middlebrook Pike, how that topography would deprive them of the use of their sign. So we respectfully submit that they have not met the definition for hardship as defined by the ordinance. It would, granting the variance would add to visual clutter, which is contrary to the purpose of the sign ordinance, and it would be inconsistent with thirteen-one-eight-nine, which is, states that one of the purposes of the sign ordinance is to enable consistent and equitable enforcement of the regulations set forth in this article. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel members, that concludes the formal arguments by the appellant and appellee, and you have the opportunity to discuss and make motions as you see fit. Counsel Member Roberto, and then Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Forrester, if I could, what signage is available to you now without a variance? If so, if this was not to, if this variance was not approved, what available signage do you have?
So, the monument sign along, I guess the, I get my directions, South Middle, on the eastern side of this track, along South Middlebrook Pike, the monument sign, and then a ten-foot pole sign at the corner of North Middlebrook Pike and Third Creek Pike. Those sinages would have the, you know, the physically type pricing that you would have to go and physically, they change, the changeable price allows those to be changed, you know, remotely. The, the signage along, the pole sign that would be at the corner of Third Creek and North Middlebrook with the ten feet, you know, the, the pricing would be around four feet is where, where that would be. So it'd be those, those two signs, but, you know, obviously different than, than what we are requesting.
Okay. And so you have signs that are available to you without the variance. You're obviously seeking a variance. So how would you answer what deprivation of a beneficial use you have if you have signs available to you without a variance?
Well, I guess the deprivation of beneficial use would be to have signage on a property that can provide, you know, the visibility and safe accessibility when you consider the, the type of traffic on North and South Middlebrook Pike and the, and, you know, the, the busyness, the tractor-trailer, you know, dump truck traffic is a solid industrial area, and allowing motorists to make, you know, a safe and timely decision when you, when you factor in where these signs are located. You know, the monument starts at the beginning of the property, past, you know, the initial access point. And so by the time somebody sees, the top of the monument sign is eight feet, so the pricing is even below that. Trying to make a, a safe, you know, directional change, maybe across lanes to access the property, by the time you see that sign, you're, you're already past it. That's kind of the justification for the, the height increase when you factor that topography in. So I think that is kind of a, you know, a deprivation of, of use and safe accessibility into the sign.
Okay. And I wanted to ask, I'm going to run out of time. Mr. Murphy, can I have you come back? Can you answer the same question, what signage, you know, is available to the applicant if there's no variance?
Right. So they have, the primary detached sign is, I forget the exact square footage, but up to ten feet high. That's, that's allowed, and it would be one that we'd have to-
A pole sign?
I can't remember if it's a pole sign or, or what. And then they're also granted a second sign, which I believe is a ground sign, limited to thirty-two square feet, and I forget what the height is on that. There's also additional signage that's on the canopy in the building as well.
Okay. And I, I know you're probably familiar with other locations in your involvement with, you know, scenic Knoxville. Are there gas stations that have the same type of signs that we're talking about that are available without a variance in other parts of the city?
I can't say I've paid much attention to city gas station permitting in the last five years, so.
Well, I'm just asking, driving through, have you seen, have you seen examples of, of gas stations that have those same signs?
I don't actually go to gas stations.
Okay. Well, then, I'll-
Sorry about that.
I'll ask Mr. Forrester the same question. Are there other gas stations that are, have these types of signs that you're, that are available to your client in the city?
Are you referring to like a changeable price sign, for instance?
Changeable price sign, but also limited to a monument sign and a ten-foot pole sign.
I do know either earlier this year or at the end of last year, there was a changeable price sign approved by the BZA on a, on a lot, an existing gas station lot that did not have the minimum two hundred and fifty frontage, feet of frontage for the address side of the property. That may have been the only frontage that they, they had, and it was not the two hundred and fifty feet, and, you know, they were awarded a variance on that. I'm trying to think of other, you know, gas stations that would, would have a setup like this, where you have three frontages, and none are coming to mind at the moment.
Thank you. I've run out of time.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Roberto. Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Forrester, would you stay? I'm trying to track the, the slope challenge that it's created. So am I understanding this right, that the slope change from South Middlebrook down to North Middlebrook somehow impacts the use of a sign on the North Middlebrook side?
Correct. So across the entirety of the property, you have about a thirty-foot change of grade. So if, looking at the easiest section would be the, the intersection points or corner of the property at South Middlebrook Pike, Third Creek, North Middlebrook. So that is a, a ten-foot change of, of grade there.
Over how much area?
I'm sorry?
Over how much area? Over how much area?
Between the two points.
Yeah.
That's, I guess, the one hundred ninety-two point five feet.
Okay. Good memory. All right. Hundred ninety, all right, thank you. But, but the slope, the, the height at one end on South Middlebrook doesn't cause any issues for the height of the sign or the, where the placement of the sign when you get to North Middlebrook?
So the, based on where the monument sign would be located and the size of the monument sign, a lot of the traffic is going to already have passed that. This, having the height increase of the signage at North Middlebrook Pike and Third Creek creates, will allow visibility sooner than the monument sign.
Yeah, I understand a higher sign would catch someone's eye earlier in their traffic pattern past the property. What I'm trying to understand is the hardship created that, that happens at the bottom of a hill and a slope at the top of the hill. How does that, how does that cause a hardship where the sign gets placed?
Well, the, the change of the topography and the, and the visibility, so the visibility for that sign from South Middlebrook Pike, you would, you can't even, would not even be able to see the, the pricing.
Right. So you're saying that the sign on North Middlebrook Pike needs to be visible from South Middlebrook Pike?
Correct. For, and, and why that is factored in is to allow safe and timely traffic movements if those motorists are trying to access the site.
Okay. Sorry, the applicant, are you the applicant?
Yeah.
You're chopping at the bit, bud. Come, come up here to the mic. Yeah. I'd hate for you to go home without saying something. Go, go ahead.
Right. I appreciate it.
You can start by stating your name and address for the record.
Alan Bell with Race Track, two hundred Galleria Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three nine.
Thank you.
I think, yeah, part of the, the topography challenge is actually when you're heading westbound on North Middlebrook. The Weigles across the street sits about five feet higher than us in the curvature of the road. If we have a standard, industry standard rectangular gas price sign that is a hundred square feet and only ten feet tall, then the bottom of the digits are only four feet tall. And if you've been out there, you've seen all the fuel trucks that are going through there. If there's anybody at the light at Third Creek, they're going to completely block our sign. So we're just trying to get up a little bit higher, especially in that westbound traffic on North Middlebrook, to be able to see it and safely maneuver to the left lane and turn in. And I know, yes, we have multiple driveways, but we're very intentional about trying to get the autos to the auto side and try to get to the, the trucks to the other side so that the professional drivers can be separate from the autos as much as we can.
Thank you for that. I understand the business value of that. Mr. Frost, would you help rephrase the crux of the hardship requirement?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Smith. It is actually now contained on page one thirty-six of the agenda, but I'll go ahead and read those and put that into the record. It's section, excuse me, it's Article sixteen point three, point is an echo. The Board of Zoning Appeals may authorize a variance from the strict application of the code to relieve such difficulties or hardships only in accordance with all of the following criteria. One, variances will be granted only where special circumstances or conditions, such as exceptional narrowness, topography, or siding, fully described in the findings of the board, do not apply generally in the district. Two, variances will not be granted to allow use otherwise excluded from the particular district in which requested. Three, for reasons fully set forth in the findings of the board, if four said circumstances or conditions are such that the strict application of the provisions of this code would deprive the applicant of any reasonable use of his or her land, mere loss in value does not justify a variance. There must be a deprivation of beneficial use of the land. Four, any variance granted under the provisions of this section must be, must be the minimum adjustment necessary for the reasonable use of the land. And finally, fifth, the granting of any variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of this code and will not be injurious to the neighborhood, detrimental to the public welfare, or in conflict with the general plan for development.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. I'm out of time, but it was worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Member Fugit.
Thank you. Mr. Forrester, you may be the one that can answer this. I just want to be clear that I understand, when did the addressing of the building get changed?
I'm sorry?
When did the business address of the building get changed?
Sometime after the first couple of weeks in February of this year.
So February of this year, not requested by you-
Correct.
And done for nine-one-one purposes, and you, my understanding is based on what you said, had that not happened, this would not come before us.
The, the changeable price sign, the-
Yes, the changeable price.
Exactly. And at the BZA meeting, BZA Board Member Daniel Ogle commented in his professional experience, he'd, he'd fallen into the same situation where you had the frontage and then the address was changed on you.
I, I'm struggling with that. I understand all this and the, the literal interpretation, but if this had happened in January, the sign would have been allowed because we wouldn't have needed a variance.
Correct.
Based on the address. And so I, I can understand, I understand all the reason that it's, quote, "not a hardship", but I, I do understand the, your client's concern that, that, that one thing made, made a decision that now causes them to not be able to get what they thought they could get unless they get the variance. The other thing I will say is there's not a neighborhood disimpacts, and there are signs like this all up and down Middlebrook Pike. And there is a, I've been told that there is a changeable, digital changeable sign on Kingston Pike across from the Old Long's Drug Store that had a variance.
I'm not sure about a variance.
Okay, didn't have a variance, but there is a changeable sign. You ask, one of you asked, where there are changeable signs within the city? Yes. So I am, I'm not quite sure how I'm going to vote because I feel a real sympathy for the fact that, but for a few months, this wouldn't be an issue. So if everybody had thought that was, address was Middlebrook Pike, it's only because the address is Third Creek. Nothing changes about where the property was or where the sign will be. It's just the address, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And I know the Weigles has been there across Third Creek forever-
Yes.
But it's oriented, the front door faces Third Creek.
Right.
And they still have a North Middlebrook Pike address as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counsel Member Parker, and then Counsel Member McKenzie.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we might need to revisit the sign ordinance because we've, we're, we've had multiple variances come before us that involve the sign ordinance. But can, we continue to be constrained by the part of our rule that says it must deprive the property owner of any reasonable use. And so while I agree with all of the arguments being made about the need for a larger sign at this address, I'm not sure it meets the requirements for a variance. But I, as my colleague said, you have my sympathies as well. I believe these are very valid arguments that a sign on Middlebrook needs to be taller than ten feet, and the pertinent information that people need to see in order to make a decision whether they're going to stop or not needs to be higher than four feet. And I would say that this is a more unique road in Knoxville compared to other roads in that there is that heavy tractor-trailer traffic and, and large trucks on this road consistently. But because of its design of the median going between the two-lane roads, it, it tends to be a more, it's not as open as perhaps an interstate or other larger, you know, highways like a Clinton Highway or a wide-open highway where you have the ability to see things as you approach them, much more so than if you're in a more congested area, these smaller signs can be blocked. So I do see it as a safety issue, and I don't know how I'm going to vote either, but I do believe it would be a protest vote at this point because I do agree that under our, our rules, it doesn't necessarily meet the requirements of a variance, but it does present a safety issue. That said, what this means for, you know, property use, land use, is it may not be the best location for a gas station because of these restrictions, but I imagine the commitment is there to move forward with these plans, and you're quite past that point. So I don't know what's going to happen tonight, but I do wonder about next steps that could be taken regarding the addressing rather than the variance process.
Thank you. Counsel Member McKenzie.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Forrester, could you come back up for a moment, please? So the denial of the third variance, did that create any type of hardship as well?
We, we did not appeal that. We, we raised it because we were already seeking the other variances, and, you know, we were, we accepted that they were, were not willing to support that.
So the third one that was denied, you all can maneuver around that one?
Correct.
It's just the first and second one. And so unlike the gentleman who said he doesn't pump ga, get gas, I do have to go to gas stations, so, and very, and familiar with this one as well, and so the location is one that has, with so many different angles of access, can absolutely be a safety hazard, especially if a person sees that sign and it's not, there's not ample time to be able to get over, to access it appropriately. I don't believe that a business should be penalized because of their location and they've been there, that establishment has been there in some capacity for how long?
Which one?
The, the gas station.
Well, ours would, is to be, to be developed.
Right.
The, the Weigles has been there in the same setup for decades.
Right. And so the purchase of it from the business owner to put that there- I just don't believe that they should be penalized for that. So, I probably know yes, how I'm going to vote on this. But again, primarily because the address change was not something that they were aware of, that they knew that it would cause this type of reaction as it relates to the variances. So, I guess we'll see, if anybody else is speaking after me, how we vote going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hesley and then Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one question, and I don't know who said it. You can, you can come up here, whoever has an answer. Did I hear earlier, like in the discussion, that the orientation of the building got changed, which is what prompted the address change?
No, it was originally explained that, came up, first BZA meeting was in April. There was only three of the five there. So, we, after discussion, we postponed to the next month. But it was, it was discussed at that meeting whether we could reorient our business, our footprint, and whether that would change. Followed up with the addressing department and they said no, that that would not alter the change that was made to the addressing.
Well, Kevin's behind you, so I'm guessing he's going to tell something different. But I'm just guessing.
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, ma'am. To clarify a few points. This parcel, the structure that's currently there, that's been there for a number of years, is an old house. And that house fronts North Middlebrook Pike. There's no gas station on this parcel today. Our understanding is that when the site plan was submitted, that showed a new gas station. So, that's a new primary structure. The gas station would be, would take precedence over the house that's, you know, that's on there. That is, that new primary structure facing or fronting onto Third Creek, that's what caused it. They're like, nope, the house that was facing Middlebrook Pike, that's no longer the primary structure. The new primary structure is now the proposed gas station convenience store that's facing Third Creek. So, that's when the addressing change took place. And Councilwoman McKenzie, just to clarify, they're not purchasing the Weigels. This is a new establishment. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, the city did not do that then? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder?
Okay. So, a little clarity, either Mr. Murphy or Mr. Forrester. The house is going away, is that correct? No, it's going to stay? So, the gas station becomes the primary structure and the house stays?
I'm assuming is the house, we'll say there's no plans to demolish that because we are buying a portion of that entire property. So, it's like total of 10 acres and we're acquiring a four-acre portion.
Okay, so they're going to become separate properties. I was just a little confused about the conversation about what becomes the primary structure. So, the house remains addressed to Middlebrook and remains. I don't even know what's in the house or whether that even matters. I just was trying to understand and follow the flow of the conversation here. Okay, so now you guys are not a Middlebrook address. I guess the question is, were you going to apply for a changing price sign and ask for a variance for changing price sign if the address had remained Middlebrook?
We wouldn't need the variance because we have more than.
You would have been able to do.
We have more than doubled the minimum frontage on either North Middlebrook, which was the prior address, or even if they changed the address to South Middlebrook. It's 500 feet and the minimum's 250. It's just of our three frontages, the one we got, they addressed us after the site plan or building plans were submitted, happens to be the only insufficient frontage. So, we have two frontages that more than double the minimum. It's just the one is about 50 feet, a little over 50 feet shy.
Mr. Murphy, I know you want to comment on this. I'm going to let you. Mr. Forrester, though, before you go away, because I still have three minutes to talk, I think. You, not you, but your client saw a property. I'm assuming someone that works for the gentleman from Atlanta. You scout for properties to cite your business. You see a property, it's addressed on Middlebrook, listed in the, in the listings as a Middlebrook property. But now, all of a sudden, it's not a Middlebrook property. It's addressed to something else because it's cleaved off of, because you're buying a partial piece off of this 10 acres. Did I phrase that correctly? I'm so sorry. Please come up and correct.
Yeah.
Yes, and actually, we're leasing the property. So, we're creating a lease lineup, like there roughly 11 acres. We're taking about four of the acres.
Okay, but this property was listed in the.
It was advertised as a Middlebrook.
It's a Middlebrook property advertised fronting three roads.
Industrial zoned.
Industrial zoned. Okay.
And our building does, I mean, it has a, it has two entrances. So, it faces.
Oh, yeah. You go to the mic.
Speak into the mic, please.
Speak into the mic.
I'm sorry.
We want the viewers from home to hear you clearly.
Yeah, exactly. And our building does have two, actually has three entrances, but it has one entrance that faces Third Creek and it's also got another one that faces North Middlebrook.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarity.
And I think you were asking about the changeable copy as well. I mean, that's something that we try to do across our entire fleet. It's, we can change the price of fuel in Atlanta. It's safe, the light's dim. You know, I mean, to me, I think the spirit of the code is to not have a tiny lot with a, with a big sign. And we've got three frontages and two of them are really, really big. So, we're not trying to cram this on a tiny lot. It's a, it's a nice-sized lot, comfortable.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, you want to comment on that? You got a minute? Well, I'm not telling you to take the whole minute.
Just very briefly, so it sounds like they have a large 11-acre parcel. Their intent would be to subdivide or lease part of that for this. So, when you're, so they're probably in a catch-22. They're trying to get approval for everything while they have the large parcel, then subdivide it or lease part of it. So, if you grant a variance now, which is based off of the large parcel, and you say it's, well, really, you know, currently fronts Middlebrook Pike and it used to, and you subdivide it and then addressing says, oh, here's our new parcel, you know, and it's facing Third Creek. And then you've granted a variance. It seems like, yeah, there's a chicken/egg problem when they're trying to get approval for this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. I know we've still got some lights on, so I want to make sure we continue to have everyone be able to make their comments. But based on the record and all the discussion, I don't believe there's been a deprivation of any reasonable use or of a beneficial use of the land. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve the appeal.
Okay, the motion to approve the appeal has been made and seconded. We'll continue the discussion with Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilman Roberto. You know, there's multiple ways to access the property. There's multiple places to have the sign. You can actually have a sign in the exact location where we're discussing. It just is not the desirable size. And I don't think any of those are, meet the merits of the variance requirement. And I just want to add that these variance requirements are important to be consistent for us to do for every appeal because they're all going to be different. But these are the same criteria we should all kind of come back to. And I think this just doesn't meet that high bar. And I wish you the best, but I don't think I can support this. And I'm continually disappointed in the lack of reference to these requirements in the BZA meetings. The minutes I read, the meetings I watch of that. I appreciate the staff, Mr. Arons particularly, making sure this is, the staff's opinion is these five requirements are requirements. So, I'm just disappointed that there's not enough dialogue about these requirements. It's more about what type of business it is and what if they wanted this sign a little bigger? And there's multiple opportunities for a sign. There's multiple access for the property. I think you'll do fine.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask Mr. Murphy a question about the, the sign ordinance and the intentions behind having different, or allowing different sign dimensions on a street like Middlebrook versus a street like Third Creek.
The sign dimensions, I don't believe, change based off of the street that it's on. Are you referring to the fact that you would have, that you would be allowed to have an electronic changeable price sign?
Right. What we've been told is if this address still had the Middlebrook address, we would not be having this discussion today.
Okay, yes, correct. So, that deals with the electronic price, changeable price sign requirement. And that was a discussion that was back in, I believe, 2009 when they were looking at electronic message centers. So, that's, you know, as well, which are the, you know, which could have messages of text and stuff scrolling or, you know, changeable things. But for these changeable price signs, my understanding is that they, they banned electronic message centers outright in 2009. The changeable price signs, they said, well, we're trying to work out a compromise. And the compromise is that you have to have 250 feet of road frontage on the, it's on the street frontage that the property is addressed to. So, that's the, that's the requirements. You have to have two. And they're like, we don't want to have it on. If it's smaller than 250 feet, we don't want, we don't want to see a bunch of these electronic changeable price signs on small, small lots, basically.
So, it was to prevent the electronic signs on small lots?
Yes, ma'am.
Which this is not?
I don't know. It's, it's an 11-acre lot, so that's probably not small.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, that's one of my concerns is that it seems we're giving this broad interpretation of the sign ordinance that is resulting in restrictions that weren't even imagined when the ordinance was developed. Like, the, the, the purpose of those restrictions was to keep these large signs off of small lots. But we're here dealing with a large lot.
Potentially. I think it is telling that the ordinance specifically imposes this frontage requirement on the, or, you know, how much, how many linear feet of frontage you have. It's on the street that the building or the site is addressed on. So, there, I will assume that that was inserted versus say, you know, the sign ordinance could say that, it could be more permissive and say that if you have a street frontage of more than 250 feet, that you were allowed an electronic changeable price sign on that street frontage. But that's not how the ordinance is written. So, it's written in a specific way.
I appreciate that. And I do think some updates are needed to that sign ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah. Is it Mr. Brown? What's? Bell, sorry. I was reading the minutes from BZA.
Alan Bell.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bell. You guys made the choice which way the building faced, right? Like, you could have faced Middlebrook, but the building faced Third Creek?
We've got multiple entrances, so we face both.
But your doors, isn't that how it's addressed?
Right. And so, but we've got a door facing North Middlebrook and Third Creek. And we were told by E911, it doesn't matter how we ordered in the site, they weren't going to give us a North Middlebrook address. So, even if we flipped and changed the site plan around, it's not going to change the address.
Okay. That's all my question for now.
Okay, Councilmember Fugit.
Thank you. That's my conundrum. That it doesn't matter which way they orient their building. E911 decided they were going to give them an address that prohibits them without a variance for doing what they could do if E911 had given them an address on Middlebrook Pike. Even if they turned the building to face Middlebrook Pike, E911 will not give them an address other than Third Creek. I know that is not a hardship, per se, by the statute, but that seems rather arbitrary, done by a governmental entity that isn't fair to the person who has, acts, who is developing the property for use as a gas station in industrial area that doesn't impact any neighborhoods. So, spirit and intent are not letter of the law, but I understand why BZA approved it. I agree, it doesn't meet the letter of the law. And I agree that I wish there had been more discussion about that. But I, I do think, I mean, the vote's going to go, how the vote's going to go. But I do think this is a very significant, not BZ, not, not letter of the law hardship. But even if you turn your building because a government entity said, we're going to give you this street address and there's nothing you can do about it, no matter if you turn your building or not and you're between two Middlebrook Pike entrances. I just, my sympathies because it doesn't seem fair.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you. Two more questions. Mr. Arons, would you mind coming up? Wouldn't want you to sit out there and not play. Two questions. The first is, can they have a sign for gasoline prices in the location? In the same location? It's just the size of the sign that they're asking for a variance for?
Peter Aron's Director of Plans Review and Building Inspections. I believe the answer is yes.
So, they can have a sign in the same location? It's just not the size they want on that spot?
It's not the size, it's not the type.
Thank you. So, they can still have a gas price sign there? The second is, could you build or develop the land with another industrial use and not have this variance?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Thomas?
Yeah, I understand the kind of conundrum that the business is in. I go back, I guess, to the ordinance as it is. It may not be the best ordinance that we could come up with, but that's what's on the books now. But this is, this is a tough one. But I, I think it may not be the optimum situation for the business, but I don't think it constitutes a severe hardship to their business. So, I'm going to pretty much follow the letter of the laws it is.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm now leaning towards there being a deprivation of any reasonable use because any, any prop, any commercial property that's put in here, any industrial property that attracts the public is going to come up upon the same issues. And what we are being told tonight is regardless of what the property owner does on this piece of property, which is of substantial size, it is going to be addressed to this, what is it, North Third Creek something? Third Creek Road. And our other, which will have impacts that we're discussing tonight and impacts that we may not even be aware of yet because this is an 11-acre site, four acres under development, and an industrial zone that is going to be used for, for non-residential purposes, which is what it was previously used for. Any, any, any property, any business here is going to need the proper signage. So, I, I do see a deprivation of any reasonable use on this property unless the zoning and the usage is changed back to residential, which is what it was, I imagine, previously when, when this house was in use. What other point did I want to make? Any other point, any other point? Yeah, I don't think that it's safe to have. Yeah, I don't think that it's safe to have the 10-foot sign and the information at four feet. I do think that we should still revisit the sign ordinance for even more clarity moving forward, so these issues don't continue to come before us. But here, with the changes that, that, that we, as a city council, have made to our zoning ordinance, that, that E-911 is implementing has created a deprivation of reasonable use on this property, so.
Okay. I don't see any further lights on. So the motion on the floor is to uphold the appeal. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. I think we need a roll call vote. Mr. Johnson?
Councilmember Roberto?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smith? Councilman Thomas? Councilman Fugit? Councilman Helsley? Councilman, aye. Yes. Councilmember McKenzie? Councilman Parker? Councilmember Ryder? She hasn't voted. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Mayor, the vote is tied.
Okay. Well, in the case of a tie vote, the motion, I may choose to break the tie, but I'm not choosing to break the tie. I'll let the tie stand.
So it fails? Yeah, we have a motion to deny. You'll have to.
I have to, I'm not making a motion.
No, no. We have to have a motion to deny.
Okay. Does someone want to make a new motion?
So I understand that if, if the motion to approve this fails, then you, there must be a motion to deny because no action cannot be, is that what I'm getting from the lawyers? I mean, I see a lot of body language.
Mr. Swanson?
You're not getting it from the lawyers, but you're getting it from the Court of Appeals. The Court of Appeals got this wrong several years ago. And this is, this is what it results in. This is their nightmare that they haven't had to face yet, where it ends up in a tie vote.
I could, I mean.
Well, let them have a tie vote.
You can.
Okay, go ahead.
This is on appeal from BZA filed by Mr. Murphy or Ms. Feld, I can't remember which. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Ms. Feld. Mr. Swanson's right, we went to the Court of Appeals on, on this, and there needs, some sort of motion needs to pass. Well, you can also do, I guess, a motion to postpone to the next meeting.
I move that we postpone to the next meeting when we have a full council here.
Second.
Because we are tied, and I don't think, there's not going to, there's going to be, we already know at least one council member can't be there.
I mean, I can break the tie if you all want to make a, a new motion to, to differ.
I think we should try to have council resolve this, and I move that we postpone this for four weeks.
Is there a motion, a second on the motion to postpone?
I'll make a second. Is it for, is it for two weeks or four weeks?
Four weeks.
Okay, the motion's been made to postpone this for four weeks.
I have a question.
Uh, it's been made and seconded. Councilmember Ryder?
On the motion to postpone. Mr. Frost, we are in quasi-judicial capacity on this. I just want to clarify, that means we still are not to have communications with parties on either side in the meantime over the course of the next four weeks. And then also, that means that we are able to study and look at the packets and the information that were provided to us coming into this meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct. You can look at the record in front of you. You should refrain from communicating with the interested parties in this matter. There's a Tennessee Attorney General's opinion to that effect.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fugit?
Have a question. If this ties, and it might.
Well, nine parties can't tie.
No, but the motion to postpone for four weeks could tie. Then it's on you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. I really do appreciate the, the spirit in which we're saying, hey, let's have council have a full membership here and deal with this. I don't know how that's fair to the applicants, because they're waiting four weeks to get a decision, so they need to see something happen. Although I appreciate it, I can't support the delaying it for four weeks, so I won't be able to support that.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to postpone for four weeks? Seeing none, all those in favor of this postponement, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. I want to talk to my attorney for just a second here. Councilmember Ryder?
I'll give you a moment to ponder. I will just say as a comment to Mr. Roberto, although, you know, you keep your mouth, I can keep my mouth shut and be just the same, but I just, in my head, I'm thinking, I understand the idea of being fair to the applicants and their need to move forward, but also potentially in the next four weeks, they may find a path forward and not want the variance. And it, am I wrong in that? I mean, they. Hope springs eternal. Thank you, Councilwoman Fugit.
So I think, I think the, the vote to postpone for four weeks tied. So I will break the tie break on the vote to postpone. And so I vote no to postpone it. So the motion fails. Let's, so let's, I'll entertain a motion to deny the appeal. Motion's been made to deny the appeals, is there a second? Okay, motion's been made to deny the appeal, and there's been a second. Any discussion on the motion to deny? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye. Any opposed? It's a tie, I'll break the tie. I vote in favor of the denial of the motion to appeal. So the motion to deny the appeal carries. Okay. You all want to break, or do you want to roll right on? Does everyone understand what? No, no, I voted with, to deny the appeal. It's a 5-4 vote. The motion to deny carries. Passes. Yeah. Because of the nature of the legal stuff, we had to not just deny the, yeah. Okay, let's move on to the next item, please.
11H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any documents necessary to accept a policy with Liberty Mutual for property flood, earthquake, and boiler and machinery insurance coverage for the city of Knoxville for an approximate annual premium of $759,568, with the option to renew the policy for two additional one-year terms.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded, Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah. Is Ms. Stickler here? I just, for the record, and for the public, we often get questions about the budget, the city, and how the city spends its money. And I'm not directing that you, I just, do you mind, in our, in our correspondence from you and email, you talked about the change in the rates, and so I just think it's important for public record, like, how the rates and how you shop around and how it's changed.
Sure. My name's Christine Stickler, Director of Employee Benefits and Risk Management. We work with Willis Towers Watson, our consultant out of Nashville, and they market to, as a broker, to the appropriate insurance markets for property insurance. We could not find a rate outside Liberty Mutual that was lower than nine cents. And so the rate that we currently had was like 6.2 cents, and then I think the increase was 6.8. So we jumped on that rate.
Okay. And I think what you shared with us is this is an increase of 8.20.
Percent.
8.26 percent, so.
Of total, like, statement of values, insured values, yes.
I got you. So the cost of doing business for us in this particular line item in the budget went up 8.26 percent?
Correct.
Okay. And this particular item that we're approving is up, there's an option to renew as well? Or for a couple of different multi-year periods?
Correct. Sometimes insurance markets get tired when they see your bids over and over again.
Okay.
So we want to keep that option open, just in case nobody wants to bid on us in the future.
Okay. But, but the rate could go up?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11A is a resolution to effect annexation of a parcel of land situated in the 6th Civil District of Knox County, Tennessee, to be added within Ward 46, City Block 46362 of the city of Knoxville, Tennessee, having an approximate calculated area of .54 acres and being known this day as all of Tax Map 119, insert L, Group A, parcel 001.16, with an address of Zero North Gallagher View Road, and to approve a plan of service for said area.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded, Councilmember Roberto?
Just say, "Welcome to Knoxville." Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11J is a resolution to effect annexation of a parcel of land situated in the 9th Civil District of Knox County, Tennessee, to be added within Ward 25, City Block 25916 of the city of Knoxville, Tennessee. Said parcel abutting at the eastern right-of-way of Dresser Road being approximately 5.56 acres and being known this day as all of Tax Map 1122, insert O, Group J, parcel 003.300, with an address of 2814 Dresser Road, and to approve a plan of service for said area.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a second easement agreement to allow proposed features of the apartments at 400 State Street to encroach into the public rights of way of State Street.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an easement agreement to allow existing and proposed features of the Knoxville Utility Board Miller's Building at 465 South Gay Street to encroach into the public rights of way of South Gay Street, Union Avenue, and an unnamed public alley.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Charles Baylock &amp; Sons Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $17,686,117.07 for the Pleasant Ridge Road Phase II project.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, items 11M and N are a really massive investment in District 3. I had the opportunity to speak to Councilmember Singh, who could not be here tonight, but she did want me to pass along that she's very much in favor of this investment. She's been advocating for it, and she's very excited to break ground on it while she's still in office, which I said we would definitely make happen. It's been years in the making, and District 3 residents and those who visit District 3 will benefit greatly from these new turn lanes and sidewalks, a mile and a quarter additional greenway construction, and the utilities will be upgraded. I'm really proud and grateful and hope that you will support this this evening. And, and Councilmember Singh, if she were here, would be thankful for your support as well. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Johnson, Memorian, and Thompson to provide construction engineering and inspection services for the Pleasant Ridge Road Phase II project in an amount not to exceed $1,223,187.31.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a sub-grantee agreement with Knoxville Knox County Community Action Committee to provide an amount not to exceed $475,000 in community development block grant funding to support the emergency and minor home repair program.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, the next five items address nearly $5 million in federal funding that will be used to keep people in their homes and to prevent homelessness. This will help hundreds of local low-income families who need this assistance. These items focus on essential home repairs, improving safety and health conditions, and implementing effective eviction prevention strategies. Kevin DeBose, our Director of Housing Neighbor Development, is here to answer your questions on this and the other next five items, and I appreciate your support for these efforts. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11P is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Knoxville Knox County Community Action Committee to provide $4,077,522.62 in U.S. Housing and Urban Development Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Initiative grant funding with a required $337,001.9 match for lead-based paint identification and hazard control services approved by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a total contract amount not to exceed $4,414,523.71.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11Q is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a sub-grantee agreement with East Tennessee Community Design Center to provide an amount not to exceed $25,000 in community development block grant funding for conceptual design and technical assistance for approximately seven community improvement projects.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11R is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a sub-grantee agreement with Legal Aid of East Tennessee to provide an amount not to exceed $50,000 in community development block grant funding for the provision of legal services to low-income individuals facing wrongful evictions and other critical housing issues.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, there's one person signed up to speak in favor of this item, Hannah Freeman. Ms. Freeman, are you present? I don't believe she's here, so there's nobody else signed up. Councilmember Thomas?
Yeah, I'd just make some brief comments about how pleased I am to see the city contributing to this and how important it is. And, you know, there's various market problems with housing, we all know that. But the least thing I think we should be able to do is to make sure that the laws that protect people who are in danger of being evicted are enforced and protected. So that's not going to happen without giving them access to attorneys. So this project really has, has worked really well, and so just glad to see us continuing to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11S is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Neighborhood Housing Incorporated to provide an amount not to exceed $385,260 in community development block grant funding to support Operation Backyard, its minor home repair program.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11V is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to accept an extension of a grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation in the amount of $240,758 to Knoxville Area Transit for fiscal year 2017 for formula urbanized area transit grant assistance for mass transportation in urbanized areas.
Motion made to approve and seconded. There's one person signing up to speak in favor of this? That's why we did not add it to consent. It's Hannah Freeman. She wasn't here a few minutes ago. Is Hannah Freeman present now? Okay, then there's nobody here to speak on this item. Any further questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're down to AH.
Yes, ma'am. 11 AH is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept a grant award from the State of Tennessee Department of Safety and Homeland Security in an amount not to exceed $525,000 for the School Resource Officer Program with no required local match to be used for expenses such as training, equipment, salary, and benefits for school resource officers at seven Knoxville schools.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11 AI is a resolution authorizing the Industrial Development Board of the City of Knoxville to negotiate and accept from Grandiflora Foundation or an affiliate thereof payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to real property located at 2439 East Magnolia Avenue and 2436 East Fifth Avenue, and finding that such payments are deemed to be in the furtherance of the public purposes of the Board as defined in Tennessee Code Annotated Section 7-53-305.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask, is there anyone here representing the Grandiflora? If you would like to come to the podium and just give us a brief overview, a very exciting project on Magnolia in East Knoxville that is very exciting, and we are really looking forward to having this type of development in our community. So, thank you.
Mr. Lawson, if you could just start, you know, state your name and address for the record and tell us a little bit about this amazing investment.
My name's Phil Lawson. I live at 755 Kennesaw Avenue, Knoxville, 37919. Oh, gosh, there's so many things I could say about this project. I've been working on it for quite some time, and I'm so excited and hopes that it'll pass tonight so we can get started on the final piece. I'll just tell you a little bit of, I mean, I don't have a lot of time, I know, but I'll just tell you a little bit about the various components of it. The old Knoxville Baptist Tabernacle Sanctuary will be our main event center where we'll have a lot of shows and probably some weddings as well. It will hold about 350 people on the ground floor and another 50 in the balcony. We hope to, we'll be having a lot of shows, a lot of jazz, blues, maybe even a little bit of country and that sort of thing. Reggae, I'm kind of into reggae. Anybody like reggae? So, that room is going to do, have a lot of shows. We're going to have shows at all prices, have some free shows, have some very low-cost shows, and have maybe some that are a little bit more expensive. We hope to have a few weddings, that sort of high-end weddings to help pay the bills, because I can tell you, shows, it's hard to get shows to pay the bills. I know that. I've done some show production in the past. But, one of the things I'm so excited about, and we've made this part of our plan from the beginning, we're planning to have, right now, I'm calling it 100. I don't know how many it'll be, 100 free weddings a year. So, if somebody comes in and says they want to have a wedding there, they'll be, my general manager used to be a wedding planner, and she'll be asking them, "Well, what's your budget?" And if they've got $25,000, we'll put them with a wedding planner and hopefully rent this space to them. If they say, "Well, my budget's like nothing," we'll say, "That's great." And I'm working on that already. I've got a great friend who was a photographer in his prior career and has done over 500 weddings. He's going to take pictures of these weddings and hand folks a thumb drive when they leave. I've got several people lined up to marry the folks. Former City Councilman Ed Schaus, who's a good friend of mine, has volunteered. He got that right, I think, by virtue of also being a county commissioner. And he's real excited. He's going to come in, so maybe a day a week, we'll plan two or three weddings that we'll be doing for no cost. And so, I've got, I've got somebody to marry him, I've got some pictures, and I just need some flowers. I may talk to Larson J. about that on his old Random Acts organization. So, that's the main room, but next to that, there's going to be a beautiful, beautiful little piano bar. And that piano bar is called Sweet Audrey's. I was going to do a jazz club a while back. I'm glad I didn't, because it was going to open right into the pandemic and so, but this is, this is just going to be a really nice little, by the way, Sweet Audrey's my granddaughter. She knows about this. She's very excited about this thing being named after her. And so, we'll have, we'll have some jazz nights and things in there pretty frequently, but we'll also, it'll also be the concession stand in the bar for other events. Right outside that, I know I need to hurry, right outside that, there'll be an outside area that will be seating for, outdoor seating for Sweet Audrey's, as well as a courtyard that we'll be able to do outdoor weddings if people want to get married outside. Over on the, well, right next to that is a house that I renovated, spent $2 million on this project, and I'm renting it to Autism Breakthrough for $1 a year. And they're planning some really great things that are going to happen there, if y'all are familiar with that. We're very lucky to have that great organization in Knoxville. It's an old historic home that was owned by Dr. Rural, has some great history. And those of you who were at my groundbreaking knows that a whole lot of the Rural family actually showed up, so that's part of it, too. Over on the Fifth Avenue side, in addition to about 110--
Mr. Lawson, if you could just wrap things up, you know, councilmembers might have some more questions for you, too.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah, okay.
In addition to having about 110 parking spaces over there, I'm doing a public garden.
Okay.
And the public garden will be open to the public during the daytime. In the evening, at some point, we'll probably have a guard go by and lock it up, so.
Okay. Thank you, thank you so much.
If there are questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Yeah, please stay nearby. There may be more questions. Councilmember Thomas?
Well, I was pretty sure that five minutes wouldn't be enough for you to tell us all the good things that are happening with this project. This is truly a wonderful project, and I think you're setting a precedent for what can be done on blighted property, repurposing buildings like that. And so, I'm hoping that it will spur more of this type of development along Magnolia and in other parts of the city. So, I think not only will this project be a good thing, but it's showing us what we can do. And so, I wish you all the luck in the world, and thank you. And I will, I've been talking about Knoxville needing more jazz options. I know Ms. McKenzie have heard me talk about that before, so you will see me at Sweet Audrey's.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for that presentation. I'm a stickler about the rules, so that's one reason I was grumbling about the time limit. But I did want to hear more about, since this is a pilot that's being requested, there has to be some public benefit that comes from it. And, you know, oftentimes, we have projects that come before us, and there's a blighted property that's being put back on the tax rolls, and that's lifted up as a public benefit. But that could make a lot of properties in our city qualify for that benefit. But I know that there are other public benefits to this property. There was some outdoor space that would be open to the public that was listed. Would you mind talking about those aspects of this project?
Well, I think just the fact that I'm investing $25 million out on that end of town is of some public benefit, because there just hasn't been that kind of investment out there in quite a long time. But in addition to that, there's a lot of things that are going to happen, the way we're going to operate this, as I said, we're going to have lots of, I have a place in New Orleans. I go down there a lot. I'm working on acts, jazz acts, blues acts, that I'm going to be trying to bring up here that I just don't think are available to us at this time, at least in the, in the capacity that we'd like to see them. And then, of course, my free weddings, I think, is, I mean, I don't know if, I think that is something I just like to do, because there are people out there that would like to get married in a really beautiful place and have a really beautiful wedding that don't have the money to pay for it. So, that's one of the things I'm going to do. But, and the public park is another, that's going to have an entrance over on Fifth Avenue as well as an entrance from the Magnolia side of the property. And so, folks will be able to come in there all during the day. We're designing that as a place that families and children and all will enjoy. Going to have two sculptures in that park created by Julie Warren Khan. If anybody, y'all may remember her as Julie Warren Martin, the famous sculptress who was here in Knoxville, who grew up here and was here for a long, long time.
I think that's lovely, and I think that'll be a wonderful addition to the neighborhood, that public space. You know, I appreciate the overview. One thing I wanted, when I was contacted about this property, what I lifted up is that we need a lot of investment in East Knoxville, but we also have some treasures on that side of the town. And one of those is the Botanical Gardens. I've attended multiple weddings there. It's a beautiful venue. We have a theater company that's coming in on Cherry and Magnolia at the corner there. I think that this will be a great addition to those developments, but as this is the first pilot approved, you know, under this Magnolia redevelopment plan, what I'm pushing for is the city to actively, and this was discussed a bit at our workshop, actively work to bring investments that the community is seeking and is saying is needed on that side of town. And so, that's one thing that I'll continue to push for, but I hope that the commitment to those public spaces or those spaces that are open to the community do continue throughout this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add, Mr. Lawson, when I heard about this project, I sort of had to pinch myself to believe that it was, you know, such a big investment. And you've dedicated your career to creating, building new affordable housing and preserving existing affordable housing. And one thing I hear from people, of course, we need more housing, and we're working on that, but people also want places to go and things to do where they don't have to leave their immediate neighborhood. And East Knoxville, I hear that all the time, people want to have, to preserve the jewels they have and to add more and restore them. So, this project checks a lot of boxes for what I hear from East Knoxville residents for what they want, preserve and protect the beautiful historical buildings that still remain on Magnolia. It's very consistent with our Magnolia redevelopment corridor that we just established, and that's one of the reasons that this is, you know, such a positive project, so, and people are going to be really excited. When we had, when you had the ribbon-cutting for the Autism Breakthrough Building, people, the family couldn't believe that that house had been restored, and the Autism Breakthrough community was so thrilled that that's there. And you've worked really well with the community from the moment that you purchased that property, because they had misgivings, and you've addressed those. So, I'm really grateful for this investment, and I think it's going to be a huge community benefit for East Knoxville and for the whole city. So, we appreciate your investment. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, the mayor mentioned housing, and I know that this particular project doesn't have that as a component, but it's consistent, completely consistent with us developing more housing in that area, and it's not going to do anything except encourage the likelihood and the desire to locate residences there.
Thank you for saying that. I believe that's true.
Seeing no further questions or comments, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
12 AM is an ordinance to close a portion of Ambrose Street adjacent to City Blocks 19184 and 19206, being bound by Ohio Avenue to the west, an unimproved alley to the east, tax ID, parcel ID, parcel number 081IC029 to the north, and 1202 Ohio Avenue to the south, and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owners.
Motion made to approve?
We do.
Oh, okay. Is there a second on the motion? Okay, motion was made to approve, has been made and seconded. There is someone signed up. No, someone else did. There's been a, okay. Yeah, it's, we made the motion the second, and we'll hear from the person signed up, and then discussion. Sorry, this was handwritten, and so I didn't notice it at first. Eric Forstall? Mr. Forstall? If you could--
Eric Forstall, 1920 Greenland Way, Knoxville, 37932. With Ball Design Services, we've been working on this project now for about six months. What we're applying for here is the closure of the right-of-way, which is 50 feet long. It's a dead end at the end of our property. Our intention here is to take the 25 feet of the 50-foot right-of-way so we can develop two four-unit townhouse projects on this property. One of the ideals in the proposal in our design through Design Review Board, which we've already been through, would be provide a private driveway access along that Ambrose portion of the 25 feet and use the existing 10-foot unnamed alley at the back of the property, widen that to 20 feet, to develop a private driveway access for vehicles to park behind these townhouses. Because of the grade of the slope, I felt that would be better use of the property to provide parking in the rear, so people aren't parking along the sidewalk, or no sidewalk, the edge of the road, which is pretty steep at that side as well. So, that's why we've requested this paper alley, I call it a paper alley closure, right-of-way closure. And I'm available for any questions in regards to that. This will be for, we are going to be splitting the lot for two four-unit townhomes.
Thank you. That concludes people who signed up to speak to this item. Councilmember Ryder, and then Thomas.
I'm going to defer to Councilman Thomas. This is his district, so I'll let him go first.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yeah, these have become somewhat routine, the closures, and I almost never have any problem with any of them. This one, I'm not saying I'll eventually oppose it, but I think it deserves more scrutiny. And we've got some information just late this afternoon, someone opposing it, and they offered some pretty respectable points about how that alley could possibly be used as a greenway. They also raised in another email some possibility of the legality of it, and I think they're valid points. I met with Eric, if you don't mind me using your first name yesterday, and we walked the property, and I did have some concerns about some trees that would be taken out. We talked about, you know, what he could spare. But the bottom line is, I think this needs more analysis. I would like to talk to somebody in Parks and Rec, Cheryl Ely, about the possibility of whether or not this could be used as a greenway. I may want to talk to the Law Department about the points that the gentleman raised in the letter to me. So, right now, I'm just really not versed enough to move forward on this. So, I would just simply ask for a two-week postponement, and--
Second.
Okay. And I--
Okay, substitute motion?
Priority motion.
Priority motion, sorry. It's been made to postpone for two weeks.
And I would only add that I did inform Eric that I was going to be asking for that. He opted to come down and speak anyway, but I just didn't want people to think that I'd blindsided him, because I told him that I was going to ask for this postponement, so.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to postpone this item for two weeks. Is there any discussion on that motion to postpone? Councilmember-- any discussion on that motion to postpone? Councilmember Parker, motion to postpone. Okay?
Well, yes, it's on the motion to postpone.
Okay.
Because in making that motion, Councilmember Thomas referenced emails that we had received, which I also have questions about. So in that two-week postponement, if we could just get some clarity, there was an email we received about, would this item that we've postponed only close the alleyway 25 feet, leaving another, you know, 25 feet for a greenway? Or would this, what we are postponing, close the full alleyway, but they're proposing some shared use? I just, during that postponement, if we could get clarity on what was shared in those emails, that would be super helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's the reason for postponing, is we don't have clarity yet, and this just came in late this afternoon.
Right.
So I think this one deserves more scrutiny, and like I said, I'm not sure exactly what to recommend as far as being the district rep in that council yet. But I definitely would like more time for all of us to think about this and sort it out, and see what kind of possibilities there might be for alternative use, and whether or not the city really wants to give this up. And I think conversations with Parks and Recs would be helpful with that, too.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion to postpone? Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to publicly give my apologies to Councilmember Thomas. He was just so slow, I didn't know where he was going with it, so I went ahead and moved to approve, so. But thank you, and look forward to getting additional information and see how that turns out. Thank you, sir.
I was just being deliberate and cautious, but no offense taken.
Duly noted, sir, duly noted.
Okay, any further questions? Councilmember Ryder?
I have no discussion on the motion to postpone.
Okay, you want me to? Well, please. All those in favor of the motion to postpone this item for two weeks, please say aye. Any opposed, the motion to postpone carries. Okay, that-
Can I ask a question, Mr. Claybo, or no, we're done?
We're done with that item for two weeks. You have two weeks to seek clarity.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to public forum. The first person signed up for public forum is Eddie DeBusk. Eddie DeBusk, are you present?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. DeBusk. Okay, if you could start by saying your name and address for the record, you'll have up to five minutes.
Yes, my name is Eddie DeBusk. I live at 5812 Grove Drive here in Knoxville in the Fountain City community. I think you all may recognize me. I've been here since the first of the year, trying to get reacquainted with the civic process here in Knoxville. I've lived here all of my life. When I attended here two weeks ago, I saw something here at this location that I had not ever seen before, where I'm standing, and it's an announcement to folks that would stand before you to say, "Speaker, state your name and address. To ensure your discussion is recorded, please speak loud and direct into the microphone at all times." Having said that, I can tell you from sitting here and moving around in this room, it's hard to hear all of you. So I would ask you, when you have something to say, please speak loud and direct into the microphone at all times, so that attendees in this all-important meetings can hear you as you conduct the business of the City of Knoxville and your prominent positions of leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up for public forum is Larry McAfee. Mr. McAfee?
Larry McAfee, president of Knoxville Firefighters Association, Madam Mayor, members of council, hopefully there's future members of council that are paying attention. A little bit about myself, I hate losing. Just a little background, I'm a Dallas Cowboys fan, so you might say I'm, should be used to losing. But no, I hate losing. Back in 2024, 2025 fiscal year, you guys saw me a lot complaining, or not complaining, but talking to you about compensation. And we had a minor victory. We got approved for EMS pay increases. Some may say it was minor, some may say it was significant. I'll lead up to those individuals. But through efforts from the Fire Department Administration and members of the Knoxville Firefighters Association, the mayor's office agreed to do a comp study, or a pay study for firefighters. And that was a big deal for a lot of us. But throughout the process, the validity of this study was questionable at best. And there were many firefighters who was upset with some of the results, and the data that was and was not used. Not all firefighters were privileged to get a pay raise this time, because of data that was or was not used in that study. As you all know, certain cities were compared to Knoxville based upon the population size and the location or closeness to the city of Knoxville. In a couple of years, we're going to do a study, and I'm hoping that the comps are comparable cities in size. Actually, I hope we compare Memphis and Nashville and FDNY and LA Fire Department, because they're big departments, but I don't see that happening. But hopefully we at least get like-sized cities in those comps. And ultimately, I hope that the study is one that is, validity isn't questioned, no matter which side you're on. Whether you agree with the outcome or not, the validity should never be questioned. With that being said, hopefully I see you guys out in Burlington on July 31st. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public forum. Without objection, this meeting is adjourned.